Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the 2024 Fountain Hills School Board Candidate Forum. I'm Betsy La Boy, President and CEO of Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce. Thank you to each and every one of you for joining us tonight. We're delighted to provide this opportunity for our residents to get to know our candidates in this positive and informative candidate forum. As our mission states, the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce exists to provide effective education, networking, advocacy, and marketing to support the prosperity of local commerce and nonprofit organizations, which absolutely includes the largest employer in Fountain Hills, our Fountain Hills Unified School District. We appreciate the collaboration with Civic Affairs from Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association, iLoveFountainHills.org. Additionally, a big, huge thank you to Tom Lindsay of Toastmasters for running the timing portion of this evening's event. We also have a new addition to share, one of our YDP members, our Young Entrepreneur Partners, a Chamber member who is 17 years or younger. Jesus First Productions is running our sound tonight. So Landon Evans, thank you for partnering with us. He's a senior in our Fountain Hills High School. I'd like to now introduce Jeff Vazada to speak. Jeff is currently serving on the FHCCA Board as the Chairperson of Civic Affairs Committee. Jeff, welcome and thank you for your partnership.
Thank you, Betsy. It is my pleasure to be here this evening and thank you all for being so collectible with the scheduling for this event. The purpose of the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association is to develop, promote, and operate programs and activities that will preserve and enhance the cultural, civic, educational, and social qualities of Fountain Hills. The FHCCA currently has over 15 membered programs under its umbrella, one of which is Civic Affairs. The origin of Civic Affairs dates back to 2010 and its mission continues to be to promote civic involvement of residents in the town of Fountain Hills, particularly in the promotion of voter participation in local elections. Over the years, Civic Affairs has posed numerous candidate forums, not only for Fountain Hills Unified School District Board elections, but also town council elections, Fountain Hills Cemetery District Board elections, and special forums were held in 2015, 2017, and 2023 for bombing elections. The purpose of tonight's event is to learn more about three candidates that are seeking to seek an election to serve on the Fountain Hills Unified School District Governing Board. The format will be as follows. Each candidate will have three minutes to make their opening and closing statements. A series of five questions will be presented to the candidates. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond. The timekeeper will provide cues at set intervals that will indicate when 30 seconds remain, 10 seconds remain, and when time has expired. The order in which the candidates will give opening and closing statements and answer the questions is randomly selected. Now, before we begin, I'll provide one reminder regarding our code of conduct. By participating in this forum, our candidates agree to act with integrity and show respect towards the other candidates, the moderator, timekeeper, Chamber of Commerce staff, and community members in attendance. Additionally, I will remind candidates that this is not a debate. The time allowed for answers is for the express purpose of sharing your platform with the audience, not calling any question or criticizing the track record platform of the other candidates. Ad hominem attacks and disruptive behavior will not be tolerated and are required the same for all of you in attendance tonight. I don't think we'll have any issues, so let's get on with the show, shall we? Okay, we will begin with our opening statements. First, Kim Duckworth.
Thank you to Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce and Civics Association for having us here. My name is Kim Duckworth and I'm running for Fountain Hills Unified School District School Board. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a proud mother of two wonderful children. I have a deep passion for education and a strong desire to serve my community. And so I'm asking for your support and your vote this November. I should tell you a little bit more about myself. I graduated from UC Davis with a degree in economics, and I've worked at large companies such as Oracle and Influr. I've been a successful project manager for over 20 years in the software industry. My oldest son just graduated from UCLA with an honors degree in pure mathematics, and he's pursuing his PhD in math at UW Madison. My youngest son attends sixth grade right here at Fountain Hills Middle School. As a parent, I have a personal stake in the success of our schools and a vested interest in making sure that my child and every child has access to the highest quality of education. I have actively participated in various roles within the school community. As a room mom, a classroom center leader, and most recently as PTO co-president, I've worked closely with parents, teachers, and administrators to partner towards student success and academic excellence. A little bit about my platform, I'm deeply committed to getting our educational ducks in a row. This means focusing on our curriculum and class time on core subjects such as reading, writing, math, and science while eliminating all distractions. I will advocate rigorous academic standards and teaching methods that enforce critical thinking and a level of learning. Family engagement is another cornerstone in my platform. I understand the importance of a strong partnership between parents, grandparents, siblings, guardians, and the school community. We need to get parents back into the classroom and at our school board meetings as much as possible so they can understand what's being taught to their children and they can participate in the education decision-making process. Last, but absolutely not least, financial transparency and responsibility are equally important to me. As a school board member, I will ensure that taxpayer dollars are allocated efficiently and effectively. Every dollar spent must prioritize student and teacher success and work to increase our enrollment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Richard Kowski.
So thank you also to FHCCA and the Chamber for holding this and thank you for all being here on a very warm evening. For those of you who know me, you can confirm that I'm still the person that you know. And for those of you that don't know me, I'll share some information and create some familiarity. So I believe that a strong K through 12 education provides the foundation for future success and purposeful life. This is true whether a person chooses college, vocational or trade school, enters the military, or goes straight into the workforce right from high school. Regardless of the path, a love of learning and the recognition of the value of lifelong learning contribute to ongoing success and personal fulfillment in our changing world. I'm fortunate to have received a strong education and I consider myself a lifelong learner. You may have heard the phrase, "The questions stay the same, but the answers change." Well, lifelong learning helps us manage that change. As a member of the Fountain Hills School District Governing Board since early this year, I strive to do my best to help the district and its parents provide a strong education to our students and to instill a desire for lifelong learning for those students. My educational background, I received a bachelor's degree and a doctor's of medicine degree from the University of Chicago. During my family medicine residency training, I was a chief resident, which is a position that includes teaching of my fellow physicians in training. While in full-time medical practice, I continued teaching part-time at a residency program in the suburbs of Chicago. My family and I moved to Fountain Hills in 2001, and my two children, now adult children, attended FHUSB from kindergarten, in the case of my daughter, Bandy, and from first grade, in the case of my son, Anna, and they attended through high school graduation. I've actively participated in district activities. I volunteered as a classroom helper for several years at the former McAllen Mountain and Fort Peak schools, including conducting sessions for groups of gifted students. I was a member of the Parents Advisory Committee for the gifted program at the former Fort Peak School, with former teacher Gene Boetman, who many of you know, late Gene Boetman, and also with Melanie Elmander-Revell. Along with my wife, Judy, who was on the governing board for almost eight years until 2022, I volunteered at Falcon Fiesta every year, helping to run the bingo game every year since 2013. In my family physician role, I presented the Tobacco and Drug Use Prevention Program to the fifth graders in the district every year since 2006, except 2020 during COVID. I was appointed by then-Governor Ducey as a member of the Arizona Board of Education Standards Development Subcommittee in 2015 and 2016, and that committee produced the current math and English language arts standards for the state of Arizona. Those standards include enhanced content for high school geometry and calculus and added the study of cursive writing. Now, if you wonder why cursive writing is important, I think my three minutes are about to end, so we'll talk about that later.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Hannah Evans.
Thank you for having us and having this event. I earned my BA from Cornell University and I have PhD in psychology from CSPP. I worked as a marriage, family, and child counselor to help pay for grad school. In my clinical practice in 25 years, I helped people to communicate and to solve problems. I believe I made up the governing board to also become a more unified, listening, and together group. I've lived in Fountain Hills almost 30 years. This jail, very young, began with Teddy in the school board with twice as much money. I have been a substitute teacher here for elementary, middle, and high school. I mentored students for close to 15 years, serving on Fountain Hills Medical Council for 12. But in recent years, school environments have changed drastically. When most of us were growing up, we weren't afraid to go to school because a student might shoot us with a gun, and we didn't lose a whole year of schooling because people were dying from an epidemic. Is it any wonder that depression and anxiety have significantly increased in our youth? Negativity from social media compounds these problems, and stigmatizing can lead our students to substance abuse. We need to provide more positive alternatives such as music, sports, and the others. Our high school currently has a music program. I'd like to start a chorus. Well-being of our students has to come first. At the end of last year, the ACT scores demonstrated dramatic improvement across all subjects, and the state just increased our middle school's score from a C to an A. Enrollment is up, the middle school grew 20 points, the high school is 1,122 students, and the preschool is full. Our new superintendent, Dr. Kane Jaget-Sinsby, is largely due credit for this. Our high school, Fountain Hills, have proved themselves well worthy of our strong support, yet we're not funding our school district. Please visit my website, thedoctorandevansforFH.com, and vote for me on the number five. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our first question. What do you feel is the greatest strength of the Fountain Hills Unified School District? How do you continue to build upon that? And what is an area of improvement that you have identified? How do you intend to address this? Dr. Anna Evans, you're first.
Do you repeat the question?
Yes. What do you feel is the greatest strength of the Fountain Hills Unified School District? And how do we continue to build on that? And what is an area of improvement that you have identified? And how do you intend to address this?
I think one of our biggest strengths is the fact that we are able to have small classes. Our actual ratio of teachers to students is 18 to 1. While it doesn't give us as much money, it does give us advantages. Also, our superintendent changed our system to a trimester system, which allows the students to have a great deal more classes, and that's an advantage for them. I think one of our biggest strengths is our program, Accelerate ASU. That is an amazing program that we have in Fountain Hills. Students can actually earn college credits while they're in high school. They're able to save up to an entire year of college credits, which also means their parents are going to be funding a home theater of paying for school. That is run partly by, obviously, ASU. The teachers here do teach the courses per se. They help the students as opposed to grading them. I think one of our negatives is that we don't have a music department right now. Do you have a marching band? And I think that's great, but I would like to see us have a chorus. We also have a very good preschool. It's developmentally based. It's based on using the Arizona Early Learning Standards. There are a lot of requirements to graduate here, which I think are good. For example, you have to have a year of Arizona history to graduate. You must pass an Arizona civics test. You have to do 20 hours of community service, and seniors do a 40-hour internship. We also have some accelerated math and science for honors and gifted students with AP classes. The favorite, from what I've heard, is advanced English with Dr. Sunshine, the teacher. Have you heard of him?
Dr. Revell?
Yes.
Next, and just a reminder, it's two minutes for the question responses. Next is Kim Duckworth.
Is it still on? Okay, thank you. I would say our greatest strength is our teachers and staff, and I know this firsthand because my son has been going to Fountain Hills Unified School District for four years now, and he's had excellent teachers. So kudos to those teachers. They know who they are. And I just want to thank the teachers and staff for everything that they do. I would say that one of the things that we need to work on is, one, finding a way to pay our teachers and staff more, and, two, finding a way to continue to retain them. So I will say that in my own personal experience, fifth grade was tough. That was last year for my son. There was a lot of turnover, and that was the one year where I felt, as a parent, disappointed, not in the teachers themselves, but just in the turnover that we were having. So I think finding a way to supplement our staff and teachers if we aren't able to pay them more, if we aren't able to do those types of things, we need to find other ways to give them development opportunities or other perks. So that would be a huge focus of mine. Another area I believe we need to work on, and I do think that there's been great progress since Dr. Jay has been superintendent, but I think we have a long ways to go, is we need to be graduating students who are proficient in ELA, math, and science. And I don't think that that's a goal not worth having. I think I would love it if 100% of our students graduated with that. So that's a really huge focus of mine, is how do we do that? Is there other districts we can learn from? Can we learn from their mistakes and their successes? And what can we implement as a school board to make that happen?
Thank you. Next, Dr. Richard Kowski.
Okay, so I'll echo some of the comments that were made. The strengths of the district, obviously, we're a small district, and the advantage of that is that there's a community field. Students will not get lost in the system as would happen at any larger schools. It can be detrimental that we can't necessarily offer all the services, all the classes that bigger districts can do. The commitment, I think, from what I sense, the commitment of the staff is they're not looking at it just the job. They're looking at it really as a mission, as something that they're happy to do, and that says a lot. And I think it translates to students who create an environment where they'd like to learn, they'd like to come to school. I think that's quite evident. Challenges, as always, is the challenge of the money that we have available and how to spend it wisely. One of the biggest challenges, I think, that has already kind of hurt its ugly head, so to speak, you know, we're required as a district to provide for special education. Special education is a very costly endeavor, and, you know, an expanding proportion of the budget is when we go to special ed. Not that I'm starting to provide it, but it is a challenge of how much money is left for other things since we're obligated to provide that, so that will need to be addressed. And then the other, one other strength that I've noticed that, and this was somewhat controversial issue, I guess, because of the money expended on it, but there's a whole new system of cameras on the high school, middle school campus, and that provides real-time access, and I think we'll talk about safety later, but that's one issue, is that it affords, hopefully, allows students to be in an environment that we can recognize things before they get out of hand, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to question number two. In your opinion, what are the most important aspects of public school systems that families consider when deciding where to enroll their children? What is your plan to make Fountain Hills Unified School District stand out among neighboring school districts and private schools? First, Dr. Richard Kowski.
So this kind of follows on what I was saying before, is that, you know, as with many, many industries, I'm not sure the school district is an industry, but competition tends to provide a better product at lower costs. I think to some extent that applies to education, and we're competing with other schools in the areas, some of which have national recognition, some of which can offer a lot of services that we can't necessarily provide. The advantage of, hopefully, the parents choosing Fountain Hills is close to home, the community atmosphere that I mentioned, maybe even knowing some of the teachers on a personal basis, that creates a positive image. So, you know, and being able to, you know, make it attractive, part of that is the buildings. I guess that's a controversial issue with the building, but I think a lot, some parents, for good or bad, do look at the buildings and say, "Wow, this is a nice school. Let's send my kids here." I don't know if a lot of parents actually look at the curriculum and all that and the retention of teachers, but that is important, so we should kind of encourage that. And then marketing to the community too, is emphasizing our strengths and what we can offer to help people make that choice.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Hannah Evans.
I think our biggest strength in, in, pretty much, inviting people to come here is our town itself. I think Fountain Hills is a place that people want to live and that you want to have a family grow up in. I do believe that having smaller classes is a huge advantage to us, and there is a community feel in our schools and in our town. And I believe that this town of our own works together, even though sometimes it seems like we're pretty divisive. I do feel that there are many men and women who come here who want to work together and want to make our town better. I feel that the strengths of our school have more to do with our community and with our teachers and staff. We have, we have great people working in our school system, and we're very lucky. As of 2022, we got our new superintendent, Dr. Chad, and he has done so much for our school. Rich mentioned our security system. I'm going to be back on that a little bit. He's not only added that incredibly high-tech and wonderful security system, he does a lot of things himself. He just did five videos new to our website for $500, most of which was done by himself instead of the $20,000 bid he got. He also has asked for volunteers to help with the family infrastructure places that need repairs in our school. I think we are very, very lucky to have this man as our super. He has increased, and this is one of the major reasons I would come to school here if I were a student and if I were parents and my kids here. There's no better testament to the achievements of our school than the newest ACT scores.
Thank you. Next, Kim Duckworth.
Can I get you to repeat the question just to make sure I answer it?
In your opinion, what are the most important aspects of public school systems that families consider when deciding where to enroll their children? What is your plan to make Fountain Hills Unified School District stand out among neighboring school districts and private schools?
As a parent and someone who moved four years ago, I have recent experience, fairly recent experience with that, and what I would say is that different parents look for different things. So if your kids are really great at sports and you want them to get a sports scholarship to go to college, you're going to go to a school that offers really competitive sports, where they can be, you know, the lead of the team, and they get noticed and they get scholarships, and so on and so forth. So we can say the same thing about other extracurricular activities, music. We can also say about academics, right? So for myself, I could say one of the appeals to Fountain Hills was the community. So just like Dr. Ian said, the fact that we are a smaller community, the fact that I could see that our community isn't going to grow leaps and bounds in a matter of five or 10 years, that's something that we wanted as a family. We wanted that smaller, close-knit community, which meant that classroom sizes were probably going to be smaller, and our son would get maybe that additional hands-on attention from his teachers, which he has gotten so far, and I'd like to see that continue. I think what we need to focus on is finding our niche, right? And selling it, a little bit like what Rich said. So our niche is that we can have smaller classrooms. Our community is going to stay smaller, and so we need to sell that and have our teachers get involved in selling, and have Dr. Jay, who I know is already starting to do that from a marketing perspective, sell that as well. Really getting down to, hey, here's an example of how this classroom needs to run. Here's what we do in this classroom. Those are things that parents really want to know.
Thank you. Moving on to question number three. Looking toward the future, what can you see as the largest challenge for the Fountain Hills Unified School District in the next five to 10 years? What is your strategy to address and overcome this challenge? We'll start with Dr. Hannah Evans.
I would have to say the biggest challenge is still going to be finances, funding. The fact is, as great as our school has become just in the last two years, I don't think our community knows how much it's improved, and I think we need to spread the word because without money, we can't pay retired teachers and hire good new ones. We can't repair our infrastructure. We can't have any wants. We can only pay for needs, and those needs have to be absolutely essential, and Dr. Jay has done a great job at doing that. But we're going to have that problem until we pass a line, until we find ways to fund our school system. We're not paying our teachers enough. Everybody knows this. They make $56,000, a little more for special ed because they work harder, they partake in jobs, but there, there are problems that we haven't solved yet in terms of trying to sell the Fort Peaks property. That could potentially bring us a lot of money, and we've been with estimated $4 million or so, but we haven't been able to sell it, to very hard properties, so we, in fact, were leasing it to small businesses, but we stopped doing that in May this year, and now there are only month-to-month renters, and the governing board is working on getting realtors in to try to get the property sold. Now, I have to say that they sold, they saved $127,000 in costs by getting rid of their forties school, and they have to, aren't there schools?
Dr. Time's up. Next, Kim Duckworth.
I'm going to have to agree, probably one of the bigger challenges is funding for our schools. I do agree that we already spent enough on wants. As a parent, I feel like the schools are in good shape in terms of fun stuff for the kids to play on, those types of things that maybe certain parents walk in and they go, "Ooh, and ah, I want to send my child here." Those things, we've checked the box on now, so now we need to dial it down, and we need to not spend money on wants necessarily. We need to spend money on needs, and that goes towards roofing, AC. And that goes towards roofing, AC, those type of things. I think that, you know, there's been recent progress and good progress with the Fort Peeks property, just to make it so it isn't a huge loss leader. So that's good. And getting that property sold, I think the community voted that they wanted that, so I think that's, that's important as well. But if we start focusing on needs, we need to also include in that the needs of making sure that we're working to increase enrollment, because enrollment is really where we fund. It's the biggest funding for our schools. So can we increase enrollment? Can we attract families like my family to Fountain Hills? And can we keep the families that are here, you know, have them bring their students back? So I think focusing on increasing enrollment will help solve the funding issue.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Richard Kowski.
Okay, so I'm going to steal some of the ideas that my two colleagues had given to us. I think funding is certainly the biggest challenge. How to address that? A couple of, a couple of specific challenges. Some of you may be familiar with the Cessna judgment where the, there was a reclassification of property taxes and the school district now is basically, our, our budgeting for the next year will be, I think, $1.3 million will be withheld to pay that county for the state. That's another challenge. Where will the money come from? Hopefully, the Fort Peeks property will go on, there'll be a realtor and then try to get some of the buyback. There are also under November ballot, besides our election, there'll be a question about whether to allow the board to consider selling, leasing, or exchanging to vacant land, pieces of land in town. As those of you who have been here a long time, when MCO developed Fountain Hills, they anticipated a population of 75,000. Well, we're not close to there, and never will be there. But they put aside extra land. Well, some of that land is sitting and it does no good. Well, it's nice to have open land, but it doesn't do any good to the district. So in the November election, if I'm allowed to, you know, at least make you aware of that, that will maybe ask your permission whether we can sell, re-lease, or exchange that land, that will hopefully generate revenue. Some of the land, like One Off Aspen is a really nice property I've walked at, and it's really very good for residential development. So those are the challenges. And, you know, as, as Kim mentioned, enrollment, certainly, we can attract more students, we get more funding from the state, which will make, help out too. And we have to look carefully at the budget and make sure, do we really need this? Is it worth, is there a way to go cheaper? Can we get volunteers? We've been very fortunate, a lot of volunteers in this community. And if we can get people to paint or do things, I'm not sure we can get anybody to replace a roof as a volunteer. That'd be nice. But, you know, maybe at least, you know, they're down that way.
Thank you. Moving on to question number four. What are your thoughts on the current budget for Fountain Hills Unified School District? Are there any specific areas you would like to see more or less funding allocated to and why? We'll start with Kim Duckworth.
My thoughts on the budget. Of course, there are areas I'd like to see more or less, more or less money spent on. I do think that there are areas in the budget where we can look for moving some dollars around or possibly making things so that they aren't as much of a loss leader. So I think the preschool has been a great opportunity to set up an avenue where we're bringing parents in, we're getting them used to our system, and then it feeds into our elementary school. But I think that the preschool itself, right now, is a loss leader. And if we can find a way to make it less of a loss leader, but yet still have that feeding program, I would like to look at some of those avenues for doing that. I think there's other areas like that where we can look for trimming things up. Maybe there's some areas in administration. I know that Dr. Jay has already done some work around that, where he's trimmed some areas around administration, but maybe there's some other areas where we can do that. Given that our school district is so small, we don't want top-heavy administration for that. So if we could try to look at that, those are things that I would like to look at.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Richard Kowski.
Okay, so one of the, I had the good fortune or the misfortune of having to look at Jake over the past three months. I think the biggest potential reason that I kind of alluded to before is attracting teachers, bringing teachers in certain areas, again, special education. What we're doing now with special education, we don't have enough special ed teachers or there's a shortage in the state, and it's hard to attract them. None of the current teachers have expressed an interest in getting the extra training to do special ed. So for instance, what we're forced to do is hire outside agencies to provide teacher. And whereas, you know, most of the teachers are making 50, 60, 70-some thousand range, our most recent contract for a special ed teacher is, they just, finally found them just under 100,000, which is a lot of money, and the outside companies are making profit on that. But the choice with that, and there was some debate about whether or not we should approve that, but the choice was basically, we're obligated by federal law to provide that education. So either we violate federal law or we pay an outside agency to provide the teacher. Now going forward, hopefully, we can provide more higher stipends, hard-to-fill stipends for teachers and attract them to actually work as employees as opposed to outside agencies. The draw for the outside agencies apparently is the teacher gets more upfront, doesn't get benefits, but gets more upfront, that's actually the draw. The drawback is the company makes a profit, and I'm not, you know, all for overregulation, but it seems like a big profit in the education realm, it just doesn't seem right, but, you know, how to address that? So I think that's our biggest challenge, how to provide the services for what the funds that we have.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Anne Evans.
I have to agree that the high cost of special education is one of our difficulties, and it's not going to go away, as Richard explained very well just now. I do want to say something else about what I feel is inequitable funding, because I think that our superintendent has done a very good job of taking the monies we have to work with, without the monies that we need, and making it stretch to the things that are most basically needed. But we have a problem that we have to do something about, in my opinion, and that's the AIC voucher program. The reason for that, that program was started for disabled students and for foster care kids. And in September 2022, there were 12,000 students. There now, after they opened it to everybody, to people who are already in private schools, are repaying for private schools, it's now 75,000 students. And this is a problem for our state budget. They have estimated a projection of this program taking $10 billion dollars on the public school system. That's a problem for us. The Arizona Arizona pays $1,100 in K to 12 funding once a year, not $7,000 a child. The non-educational expenses and lack of audit, in my opinion, allows things like horseback riding and water skiing lessons. And yet 92% of our families in Arizona choose public schools, and 88% of our schools and public schools need major maintenance repairs. It's a huge problem.
Thank you. Moving on to question number five. Why do you want to do this? What do you need skills that you possess? What do you need skills that you possess that will benefit the children and families of the Fountain Hills Unified School District? We will start with Dr. Kowski.
Okay, so, little story. So I was appointed to fill a vacancy, and when I went out for the interview back in, I guess it was Jan, December or January, it was about an hour interview, and about probably 40 minutes of that interview involved, are you sure you want to do this? No one's going to be happy with you, we're both going to attack you. And then I went to get sworn in by Steve Watson, superintendent of the county, and he shook my hand. So Rich, before I swear you in, are you sure you want to do this? Yeah, I'm sure I want to do this. I mean, I do a lot of things, and, you know, I think I have a pretty good perspective on what involves in that. You know, I've been fortunate, as I mentioned before, that I've had a good education and had a lot of experience in teaching, and I want to share that with others. And it may sound kind of corny, but I mean, that's true. That's, you know, that's part of the way I was raised, to help others, to do what you can, to make use of the gifts that you've been given, and do it for others. And as, as many of you know, we're not paid to do this, okay? So it really requires a dedication and a commitment to doing the best we can, and hopefully helping others, having as much success as I have. I'd love to see that.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Anne Evans.
I love learning, and that's part of why I love education. If I could keep going to school, I would. But I, I have taught all my life in one way or another. I taught men and adults when I was working as a psychologist. However, when I was just finishing high school, I worked as a camp counselor and I was teaching five to eight-year-olds habitant. It was the most fun, I think, I've ever done. And we played, I directed a play called Hobbit, we did this with five to nine-year-olds. And I'll never forget those things. All the moments I've had sharing with teaching students and also being a student myself have remained with me. I will be a volunteer, as a major volunteer, and will do it for years. And I wish everybody would, because it would make our community so much better if all of us did just a little bit. I believe in education. I believe that our students can go wherever they want to go if they really want something and they work hard for it, if we open the doors for them. I, I love doing what I do, which all my life has been teaching. I'm hoping that I can help our school system, because I believe in our school, I believe in our community, and I believe in our superintendent. I can't give him enough praise, I really can't. He's done a fantastic job so far. I love learning, that's my thing.
Thank you. Next, Kim Duckworth.
I want to do this, I want to do this for my son, and I want to do it for his friends, and I want to do it for the students of Fountain Hills Unified School District. And the reason why I believe that I'm a great candidate and I should be on the school board is because I am a parent of a current student. I do understand the challenges that he faces and that his friends are facing, and want to help solve that. I have a lot of experience, I've always dedicated my time to my kids and their public school system. So with my older child, you know, I was room mom multiple times, and let me tell you, in California, they make the room moms work, okay? And I led, you know, centers, which is something I don't see us doing here. And I think parents will get more involved if we can have them coming in and meeting centers, and you start to build groups of parents that really enjoy it, and it's like teamwork and it helps the teachers. So I have a lot of great ideas just from my experiences previously with my older son before COVID. I do think that COVID has changed the landscape in our school system, and that's none of our faults. But I think we need to start to move back to some of the things that were working, and I know what some of those things are. I have a lot of drive and endurance. So, you know, my youngest son, we foster adopt it, and foster adopting is not easy. It's a lot of work to get to the point where they'll even allow you to foster a child, much less adopt them. So there's a lot of things that you go through. And through all of that, I learned that I'm a fighter for our kids, and that's where my passion is. And so remember me and go for me.
Thank you. Before we move on to our closing statements, I want to thank all the candidates for participating tonight's forum. So closing statements are a reminder that they are three minutes in length, and we will begin with Kim Duckworth.
Okay, thank you. Let me pull up my page here, because there's a couple of things I have to refer to. So first, I just want to say that I'm, I'm very excited about the opportunity to serve on the school board, and I really do want to make a positive impact on the lives of our students and our families. I'm proud that I have the support of organizations that share my vision. Some of those organizations that have endorsed me is Arizona Women of Action, Arizona Friends of the Coalition, the Palo Verde Republican Women's Club, Crimson Saguaro, the Republican LD3, and the Tea Party. And those endorsements reflect a collective commitment to focusing on what truly matters, which is academic excellence. I really do want to get our educational ducks in a row, and I believe we are, but there's always room for improvement. So I want to be part of that effort to get those ducks in a row. I want to build a brighter future for our students and for our community. And so I encourage you all to go to my website, which is duckworthforfhusd.com, and again, read through my platform. I, I did bring some palm cards and some other items over there, so feel free to wrap those as well. And please vote for me, Kim Duckworth, for Fountain Hills Unified School District School Board in the general election this November.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Anne Evans.
Our future lives in the students we teach today. I believe in back to basics, our job is to educate. Besides this foundation, my most important goal is the wellbeing of our students. Students can't learn in negative surroundings. As members of the governing board, we're responsible to provide a healthy and safe environment, which is conducive to learning. We need to ensure that our students can succeed in their education and in their future endeavors. They've spent much of each entire week in their school alone. Students need to feel like they've evolved and they're part of their community without having to cope with the stress of being stigmatized. School board members also serve as models for our entire school. Their behavior sets examples for others, from students and teachers to staff. Working as a positive, unified, and civil team matters. As a psychologist, I've spent many years helping people live, learn, to listen to each other, to communicate, and effectively solve problems together. We need to provide positive alternatives to exclusion and dissubstantive youth by offering more music, sports, and the arts. I plan to seek out qualified volunteers for an adult-led course for our students to socialize together, creating an option for something fun and uplifting instead of the negativity of constant social media. I strongly support our mentor program and the Fountain Hills Coalition. I encourage our parents and students to take advantage of the support that these excellent programs bring to our Fountain Hills schools. My website again is drannevansforfh.com. By the way, voting begins October 9th, so go on there before November 5th. School board will be at the bottom of the ballot, so please don't pretend to have us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Richard Kowski.
So you're all on the edge of your seats about the cursive writing, right? Well, wise and upward. Many older technical building and public infrastructure documents are written in cursive, so if you don't know cursive, you can't interpret it. cursive, so if you don't know cursive, you can't interpret those documents and do the, you know, act accordingly. And of course, our nation's original founding documents, the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, and the Bill of Rights, they're written in cursive, hence the importance of that. So a little bit more about my background and qualifications that I didn't get to in the opening. I also served as a clinical instructor in Mayo Medical School from 2009 to 2013, and I continue working in the education of medical students and resident physicians. My main jobs currently, I'm an associate director at the Scottsdale Osborne, or the Honorable Scottsdale Osborne Family Medicine Residency. I'm also an associate professor at the University of Arizona College of Medicine in the Department of Family and Community Preventive Medicine. I've taught faith formation classes at my church since 2002, with children ranging from kindergarten through eighth grade, mostly owned third grade. And my other volunteer community services include participation in and/or leadership of several additional church ministries, some political organizations, and on the Board of Directors of Aid to Women's Center in Tempe. And I still get seven and a half hours of sleep a night. That's a lot about me and my background, but what's important is how this translates into how our schools deliver an excellent product or service to our community. I'm fortunate to have been involved in so many educational activities and contribute my skills and experience to help others pursue and achieve their full potential. I want to continue doing that. I spend the time needed to study issues before the board to help me reach a rational, responsible, and practical decision to vote. I fully support parental rights. I value personal responsibility in a merit-based system. I would be honored to continue serving this community, its students, its parents, and its taxpayers on the FHUSD governing board, and I hope that you all agree with that concept. I welcome your support. I encourage you to share that support with your family members, your neighbors, and friends. I humbly ask for your support in the November 5th election, and as mentioned, early voting starts October 9th. I have campaign literature out there. My website address is richardkowski.us. It's very original, I know. Richardkowski.us, it's also written on the cards there. And if you have a metal bumper, a bumper magnet for the back of your car or brought out, I very much appreciate you helping me out in that way. And again, thank you to FACCA, the Chamber for having us here together, and thank you for being here and listening to all of us. Thank you.
I was just about to give another round of applause, but you guys didn't do it. Thank you to all the candidates for participating tonight, and thank you to everyone who attended this evening. It is so important to vote, and the decision-makers at the local level are the ones that really impact you on a day-to-day basis, so please tell your friends, tell your family to get out and vote this November or October, if you're early voter. So that concludes the candid form for Fountain Hills Unified School District. I will now welcome Betsy LaVoy to the microphone to share her closing remarks on behalf of the FACCA and the Chamber of Commerce. Betsy?
Thank you so much, Jen. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for hanging out with us in our lobby, aka our mini-center here for this forum. As we conclude our 2024 School Bean Candidate Forum, I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to everyone in attendance tonight. You could have chosen to be anywhere, and you chose to be here, and we appreciate your engagement and your commitment toward the future of our community, and that is truly inspiring. A special thank you goes to each one of you three, our candidates for your participation, your willingness to share your visions and your ideas for our school district here in Fountain Hills is a testament to your dedication to our community and to your public service and our town's future. Thank you again for being here tonight and for your ongoing support of the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce, the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association, Toastmasters, Young Entrepreneurs, and the Fountain Hills Unified School District. Together, we are building a brighter future in Fountain Hills, and have a wonderful evening.